I now call that great family school board meeting to our goal thing, which is to play. And basically, it's two more lives in our space over there. And two regard, which is fans, one nation, another God, individual, with everything and justice for all. Question?
Present.
Here.
And here.
Present. Here. Present. Well, first of all, let's welcome, um, Mr. Leslie Johnson to our meeting of the our website, we want to talk about. Alright, I have two point on one, public comment.
Public comment.
You know what sign now, alright. Okay, I have three point on one, approve of events. You may not do, you did the minutes, ready your questions? By the management said that we provide events to. Uh, the others, two point on one, any questions? The area identified by management said that we provide events to. I have five point on one, touch me down with this.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Dr. Tompkins, tonight, our night to show you what we're made of. Um, I'd like to introduce Dr. David Math, who is at the press room, you're Tompkins, and I am Dr. Phil, the virtual, uh, cover of the Eagles. And tonight, we want to show you, um, a little bit about the Tompkins, and let you understand that we are always family here. Our, our model here at the Tompkins, in the second year, has been one is with one team, uh, with a hashtag, and we order that proudly every day. We feel like we can endure and conquer anything here at the Tompkins, as long as we work as one team. So, first, of course, we're gonna look at our academic results from last year. You're probably gonna see me brag a little bit tonight, I'm sorry, but we can do that, because we are in all green here in the Tompkins. We are over the moon. Um, what I did was, I showed you just quickly, a comparison between the twenty-one, twenty-two scores to the twenty-two, twenty-three scores. And you can see, basically, overall, for English, we were just about where we were the year before, except for one area that we are extremely proud of, which is our students with disabilities. And you see that we went from seventy-eight to eighty-nine, and those are our justicied scores. Um, in math, again, we pretty much stayed the same with everything, again, huge success with our students with disabilities, going from sixty-seven to eighty-five. Science, like I said, is, we're gonna brag tonight, uh, we were at fifty-one percent in year twenty-one, twenty-two, and we stayed at seventy-nine. We were so close, but we didn't stay, doesn't round up, uh, so we were sitting at seventy-nine this year, which was phenomenal for us. Um, and then attendance, attendance, uh, did go down a little bit, because of course, we're looking at the overall chronic expectancy rate. And we did, uh, we had a few more kids last year, but we're, we're pretty tight on attendance, so we made up with our fourteen percent. That is the best picture I could possibly show you, I thought about making a poster, passing it out, I thought maybe that might be too much, so I tried to keep it professional, like Dr. Math told me to, and I'm gonna put it up there on the screen for everybody to see. Um, not only are we all green in our academic achievement, but the achievement gap is where we really worked hard last year. Um, we, we had some yellows, and we knew that we needed to really focus in on that, and using data to draw the instructions is the key. So, all school quality indicators are at level one, and we had no level three or two. So, just to give you a quick insight on what we're doing this year, here at the Tompkins, our school improvement plan highlights. We met with our school improvement team two times over the summer to discuss data and create goals for the school year. We, of course, have a focus on reading, we're decreasing the number of parents identified students, and then pre-K grade. Those are our little guys who have problem with us phonemic awareness on phonics, um, and we have, um, we're trying to decrease the number of the children who are identified, which means that they're below grade level. We also wanna increase the number of students reading on grade levels, for grades four and five, especially noting the African-American and less W D students with disability subgroup. So, how are we gonna do that? We have some action steps. The first one, this summer, we trained one person per grade level in, um, a methodology referred to as Orton Gilliam. It's lots of kinesthetic, um, strategies, as well as tons of phonics. So, we have one person trained, uh, per grade level, plus a special education teachers. So, when we do power up, as we call it here at the Tompkins, we split in groups, and we work on deficits that the kids have. Those most sixteen to twenty-four kids per grade level are going with the Orton Gilliam trained teacher, to work on those foundation skills that are keeping them from making progress. We have house tutors, we have five of those here that are pushing in and working with our teams. Um, and then we have a new writing block that we've implemented this year across the division into the daily schedule, and it has specific tasks for every grade level, and that is every day for thirty minutes for writing. For our focus on math, again, we're increasing the number of students achieving the benchmark score, again, putting of those two achievement rep gap groups, which is African-American and, um, students with disability, again. Our action steps, power up every day for forty-five minutes, doing that correct teaching. So, on the Friday, when you get the test, you know you failed it, and you know what they failed. So, the next week, those small groups are pulling to remediate the, the skill that was not mastered. We have some math presenters coming in this year, uh, to do some magical math tours, as well as we spend a nice chunk of change on math manipulatives, and we have an inventory, and they've been given out to teachers. And then lastly, we have our focus on science, of course, we wanna, we gotta make changes here, just one more thing. So, again, we're doing the increased science experiments in the classroom, uh, we have our great science here that we also have, that many of you attended last year, which was a huge success. This year, we're having grades three through five do individual projects, in K two, do classroom projects. Uh, cross critical reading, we do lots of different novels that have to do with science. And then our biggie, our STEM lab, which I wish you would be able to see, it's right through those doors to the left. Uh, we worked really hard on that this summer, we spent a large amount of our Title One money on STEM lab materials. We have phenomenal STEM lab assistants, who meets with every class, one day out of every week. So, everybody's ability is good STEM lab, at some point during the week. And, uh, teacher bars took all of the science S O Ls, put it, put it in the spreadsheet, and tagged them with specific activities and materials, and so they do the STEM lab. So, highlights of a Tompkins, I could fill that whole page, but I, I played Mercy, and I did just the top step. Um, we had some great PD come in when the teachers came back to school, and the best one we had was from the Hampton Road Dyslexia Center. They came in, and they did not just talk about dyslexia, they talked about reading, and how to teach kids who have a hard time reading, and, and action steps to take, so we had them for one day. Another highlight, STEM lab up and running, servicing every class in the school, one time per week, and that started the first week of school. Being the biggest school, um, being an elementary school in Acmet County, and serving over five hundred and eighty students every single day, we were asked to be the first school to start grabbing those breakfasts. And we gave a shot, with the little Tompkins coming in the door in the morning, we're just like a child. They grab their milk, they grab their breakfast, and they go to class to eat it. So, we don't have all that wasted time, and that's yet, we don't have wasted food. Uh, we hosted our Title One night, September twenty-second, thank you, Mr. Reeves, for being here. We had three hundred and fifty votes in this auditorium. They loved it, it was a best school night, they met with their teacher, and they got an ice cream on the way out. We had the best presenter, uh, two weeks ago, on October first, we had Sweethearts and Heroes come, and we've been waiting for this for over a year. They go out more than a year, and big thanks to Mrs. Payne from Pontekey, experienced all of this. We had Captain Incredible, otherwise known as Tom, and, uh, US Army veteran Rick Yarach. Here, this is auditorium, and it was a day that we will not forget, um, talking about bullying, kindness, compassion, heroes. And, um, as you know, Sergeant Yarach is very speaker from a fire that he endured in a, in a tank when he was, um, in Iraq. And I've lately been worried about the kids the night before, because I'm worried that they might get scared, that they might laugh, and, uh, we've talked about it. We said, they choose these every day, this is their thing, and I said, I know, but these are our kids, and he won't know, and there was silence. And it was good for the heart, the presentation was great, he went around all the classrooms, he talked to the kids about his service and his experience, and, and just being grateful for what he had, because he is certainly very grateful. Um, Success Academy update, we're starting Saturday, can't wait to see how many kids come, right now, we have a hundred and five. It went up, I made this, a hundred and five students say they're coming, and then Saturday's power ups, I can't say enough about those. Went complaining to their teachers, everybody's rocking, um, they're using their, their deficits to all, already move routes from classroom to classroom, and, um, looking at ways that they can fix those holes before we move forward. And that in a nutshell, is from helping elementary.
Well, thank you so very much. We feel so excited. And, of course, we, we want to.
Congratulations on your success. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Next slide, along the agenda, is the six point on one, the legislative package review. In, uh, for the, I need to mention this year, the legislative, um, proposals that are four. And what I would do briefly over those four, if you, if you look at them, and get them plugged, and how this four needs to be supported, it's four, and that's how. And the third, first one, they're gonna pay a study committee. And this one is dealing with, it's a member, proposal member, and it's really dealing with school finances and, uh, construction. What we want to do is to bring it to include, for safety and security upgrades, this policy already exists, but we just want to add those to it. So, for safety, because of, of the times we're living in. The second policy is dealing with background checks. Apparently, the, uh, FBI is going with a new upgraded background check, the next generation identification. And so, they're gonna say, uh, we want the state to be able to pay, so that we can get that. And then the third proposal is dealing with a lot of the local flexible, in urban science, and science has links to, um, schools of, of using the total speed, they're built, we say, we, we talk with the local authorities, and the total speed of this design, and that thing, so they can be more, be more safe for our students in that environment. And the fourth one is dealing with, uh, with, uh, judicial enforcement of choices. And what that is suggesting, that there will be a standard method of, uh, enforcing choices, uh, for, that because there are, are options, who are subject to be more leave giving, someone who's, it would be a standard there, so that we could, uh, always have something to take over, to provide, and to have enforced. Uh, so those are the four, and then there are many other foundations, really, except, but this, I wanna do is be the start of a voting on what we support and what we don't want.
Good evening, board members. If you recall, in our last two meetings, Ms. Taylor and Ms. Ferguson introduced you to our Governor's All-In Virginia Initiative. After revealing initiative, a task force was created, and has met. That task force includes teachers, administrators, school board office personnel, parents, and a school board member. This team will reevaluate in the upcoming weeks to review the budget and allocate funding based on updates from the V D O E and the Virginia Literacy Partnership. And here for you, you have your All-In Virginia team, um, and now I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Stella Jordan, who will share her portion in regards to attendance.
Hey, everybody, good evening. As you all can see, Acmet County is officially All-In Virginia. During the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year, one in five, uh, third graders were confully absent, missing eighteen or more days. Uh, for two point four million awarded for All-In Virginia, chronic absenteeism has received two hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-nine, five hundred ninety-seven. The money you receive will be going for Saturday Attendance Committee meetings, payment for the staff as needed. We will hire a attendance clerk for two years, because as of now, expect a nurse makes our calls in our building, and that is, um, our, our, and supplies at this point. Schools will be giving money for attendance, so that include with a mat number two, attendance rallies, ice cream social, dances, etc., to celebrate good attendance, and for perfect attendance. Although, All-In Virginia is designated for grades two to eight, Acmet County public schools is only ambition to reduce chronic absenteeism at all grade levels. That's the original deadline for submission of the plan was yesterday, October sixteenth, and with great sweat and tears, Acmet County public schools submitted on Friday our plans of state, and at that time, only four divisions have submitted their plans of state, but we are looking good, and we wait until we turn it over.
Hello again, I'm gonna share with you updates in regards specific to literacy. And keep in mind, as I'll share, we have two things, we have the All-In Virginia initiative, and we have the Virginia Literacy Act, they go hand in hand together, so you'll hear me refer to both of those. Um, for literacy, with this initiative, we got just a little over four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And as you can see here in, um, in this slide, for fiscal year twenty-four, and the reason there are zeros in the first two sections, is because we have funds that'll be coming in for the Virginia Literacy Act that we wanna utilize as well. Um, you'll see, we're gonna purchase science meeting tomorrow with a representative from one of our curriculum, uh, reading curriculum, and we're gonna discuss prices for decodable texts. And if you're not aware of what a decodable text is, when students are learning to read, these textbooks are more beneficial than when students are reading to learn. As they get older, and they're reading to, are learning to, reading to learn, they think they can use little readers, whereas decode the text are for students that don't have that phonemic awareness and, um, not phonological skill. So, that's what the hundred thirty-nine thousand is for, the decodable text. As you can see, in fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six, money will be utilized to train and hire, um, additional reading specialists. We're shooting for four, and we all know right now, we're in a little bit of a crisis with, um, teacher shortage. Uh, some of the things that the state has put out with the Virginia Literacy Act is that districts must provide at least one reading specialist for every five hundred and fifty students in grades K through three, and one reading specialist for every one thousand, one hundred students in grades six to eight. We currently have seven reading specialists that serve elementary and middle school students, and we have an open position at Arcadia Middle School that we're hoping to fill, um, very soon. In regards to Orton Gilliam, um, as you mentioned that a while ago, you may or may not be familiar with that, and what that is, it's an approach that follows the science of reading, which you're gonna hear definitely go a lot in the Virginia Literacy Act. And what that is, is respecting that skills needed to become a proficient reader need to be explicitly taught and individualized to that student. These trainings support teachers with how to teach children to read, and again, I go back to that to decodable texts. Students learn phonological strategies to allow them to learn how to read and build phonemic awareness, and I'm happy to say, right now, we have fifty-nine teachers trained, um, certified in Orton Gilliam. So, our goal is to continue, um, like Ms. Pugh said, wanna have a grade level, we would like pre-K or, or everybody be trained in this, because it's, it's very beneficial and shows results. So, to wrap up my part, we're continuing to receive details regarding the Virginia Literacy Act, which will be fully implemented next school year. I recently, uh, emailed the Virginia Literacy Partnership, which is through V D A, with questions regarding reading specialists, um, templates for our vision-wide plan, templates for individual plans for students that are identified with the P I S assessment. And, um, their, their response was, thank you for sending those topics, I'm afraid that we don't have much information to offer. The V D O E is working on a frequently asked questions document. So, basically, that tells us, the state still has a lot to come down our way, so, once we, as we receive this additional information, we will be moving with our committees and present additional information to you. And I just wanted to say, but Ms. Jordan already shared that we were really excited our team was able to get the budget completed and submitted before the due date. Um, like she said, one out of four divisions, divisions in the state of Virginia. So, up next, you have Ms. Karen Taylor, who's gonna be reviewing the learning portion of the initiative.
For the last one, we, I kinda did a little bit of a sneak peek, um, what it's about, um, but just so you all can see, this is from the V D O E, according to what they call the high dosage academic tutoring, um, and what their requirements are that those funds can be used on, and that goes for all three categories. So, though, like Ms. Jordan said, we know we have a dependent issue K twelve, we can only spend funds on three through eight. So, we are already looking at what can we do after this year, when the extra funds are gone, to find other grants to support our K two and our nine twelve. Um, because they also need the additional support as well, um, as well as not just for the, for the academic portion, um, yeah. So, if you go to the next slide, just so you all see the criteria of what each student has to identify, which students in our D E's, or numbers last, we're gonna go through again. So, looking at the current third grade right now, the state is requiring us to go by these areas, and we're trying to find them for English and math, as far as math is, and not proficient. So, our current third grade, which is a September growth assessment test, we had three hundred and thirty-two students identified, and one of those two categories for math. We had three hundred and twenty-eight students in one of those two categories for English. Now, the numbers I gave last time, I'll go again, is we had to go back and look, as you see, the students that took the three through the second grade S O L in the current, that are now in the current fourth through eighth graders, one thousand five hundred and twenty students identified in one of the two categories for math, one thousand three hundred and ninety-five students identified in one of the two categories for English, and again, on the third grade, three through eight. According to the government, you have a high school today, they're doing very well, but we're still pushing along, and we're giving all the support we can, as well as that's one, that's the reason why, we, not from the last, we developed a lot of the last year for special academy and actual figure. We want our first and second graders to be a part of this, because eventually, they are gonna be a part of this three-year, uh, process, but also starts at early age. We gotta get the fundamentals in before they get that sort of grade. So, just something to say, you guys, last, uh, time about the Success Academy, so three through eight needs to go over to keep, more with the Success Academy. Um, if we can find additional funds, we can wanna be able to offer it to other students outside the identified students. Um, we're also looking at continuing with after-school tutoring, like I said last time, the issue with after-school tutoring is bus drivers. And being able to have bus drivers to be able to come back and pick up the students, um, that aren't already doing peer run or double run. Um, we definitely have, we have teachers that are on the state, kids are on the state, it's a community, able to come home, and give them a decent hour or two. Um, without them pounding around even longer, because the bus driver has to do a double run. Um, also, we're gonna keep on our interns. Our high school interns really were a major hit last spring, um, already again, we sit the ground running. I also wish you a walker who's teaching our Virginia teacher for tomorrow classes, has been helping our pastors oversee our interns, and going to each school, we need an administrator, we need a student teacher, so we feel like peer tutors are a big help to our kids as well. Um, I can tell you, the walkers, last year, I walked into a classroom here, and I wasn't sure if the teacher was, I didn't realize the student was a student. He was teaching for a group of kids, like, he was the actual teacher, he was phenomenal, um, and he graduated, she had a leave, went to U B A. Um, but our students have done a phenomenal job, and we've actually had some kids enrolled for doing teacher for tomorrow, after doing the intern. And this spring, it's, there's a lot more to teaching than what they thought. Um, the other thing is teachers, during, during their planning period, we did, I put some teachers, and so, and so, there are some of them willing to, maybe two or three days a week, join their planning, not a full planning, but maybe thirty minutes to an hour ago, and help another teacher do small group tutoring, or pull out, and do a little session. Um, also utilizing our retired teachers. We have retired teachers, they're gonna come back and work full-time, but they are willing to come back and work maybe a couple hours, uh, a week for two or three days. So, utilize some of our retired teachers, as they're, they're there for D as well, in English and math, um, to be able to also help tutor. Also, elementary schools have already been doing it, but speaking to the middle schools, to also make sure we implement within that ninety-four minute block of English and math, at least twenty to thirty minutes within the lesson planning, that they actually do small group. Do they, it doesn't always have to be pull out, it could be that they're just pulled to the side, or just a small group of, you know, desks, that they can work together and work on a certain standard, um, that just a small group, at some point, like I say, if another teacher comes in, maybe they pull over their class anymore. Um, also, Lexia is another program we started last year, and we saw a huge success rate. I would say, she gets to high school, and she's elementary, utilize it to the fullest, the lessons, and they give a, a contribution to that, is why they feel like they went from red to green. Um, I could say, virtually to high school, they actually started kind of like to have them, they already did grad and go, but what they did was, to see it's gotten to five, or it's seven twenty, because their classes start from seven thirty, they started writing on Lexia, and they worked in twenty minutes every morning before first clock started, the student worked on Lexia. Which is a really, a program of reading. We are looking at what the state, because they just sent us their online platform, for what we can use for reading right now, um, so we are looking at that again, for those, you're fighting against, October, October, when we just got that slogan, but sure, we are getting the pieces to us. Um, and like I said, that's, we work, one of four schools has sent to the state, but we also got a email, activists submitted on Friday, but though it was due yesterday, the state has now extended the deadline on our windows of delay. Because so, this wasn't sure, um, yes, this is superintendent, we're just meeting, most of them are national. have two meetings, most of them are not, because it's a Nazi habit, they could put it up in one five sixteen. Um, but I think for us, we have a lot of things kinda already in place before. And also, you see, the VR dollars in Denver, this is year twenty-four, we want to spend now that the national fund. So by doing that, that helps us for year twenty-five and year twenty-six, of which we're gonna look closely at the funds. You know, how are funds being spent, do we need to make any amendments to the grant to adjust anything, something's not working, okay, then we come back, we roll the board, and we try something different, um, definitely other options, but when you get into salaries, and we go to salaries, we will also include the benefits that have been drawn to, and it kinda gets spent really quickly. Um, so again, we will definitely monitor it now. That's what we have for all of Virginia, so we're, we're all with you.
Any questions for us?
Thank you very much, for your support. So, I have a question on the decodable textbooks. Is that, is that new to our town, is that on my knowledge?
No, it's not, it's not new. The, the Virginia Literacy Act is really pushing for the science of reading, decodable text fall under the science of reading approach, and we have materials in our buildings already really identifying sets, so teachers have access to kindergarten, six, seven books per level. And the difference between a decodable text and a level reader, a level reader, a lot of times, children that may not have the reading skills, making still guess, they look at pictures, and, and they're not really using that kind of foundational skills, they're not, they're not learning to read, they're picking at the pieces with decodable text. Uh, it's, it's kind of gone back, we used to have a whole series of decodable text, um, so that's the difference in those two, but it's nothing new, we're just bringing it back.
Couple of questions, um, in both instances, I'm just curious, so, one hundred and sixteen K for the interns, am I right in saying that's for study plans, is that what it says?
That is, we're working at ten dollars an hour plus eighty percent, um, for the better case.
And on the average, about how many?
Forty. We started forty, that's what we did this past year, as our goal was forty, we actually did hit the forty, um, in the spring. We don't quite have as many for this fall, but we already have a lot on interest for the spring, a lot of times with our seniors, the front ages are classes, so they might be pretty smoother spring, and like the early out, like, it's like the internship, you have a lot of things that you don't, you're like, early out, the revenue, the internship.
My other question that you there is, um, in regards to the hundred sixteen K for four reading specialists potential for, how competitive do we think we are with that dollar now, or up to four?
So knowing that we have a position open right now that we haven't filled, we, we just estimated, we looked at various salaries of reading specialists, um, initially, what we were gonna start at fifty thousand as a salary, but when we looked at competitive, we said, no, that wasn't really competitive, so we looked at between sixty and seventy thousand, but it's an estimate, 'cause it'll depend on if someone comes to us with experience, we'll have to see where they're on the scale, so this really is an estimate, and so we, we can recruit, and, um, we also wanna pay, I don't think I mentioned, we wanna pay for a course for, for our teachers right now that may be interested in getting the certification in addition to the two courses we already paid for, so some of this fund could go towards that training.
A question about the, the numbers you said about the third graders that are at those, what's on there? You said three through thirty-eight, or is that?
On math, it's three hundred and thirty-two, for English is three hundred and twenty-eight, and that was based off those that fit in that category, and then from the September grade assessment test, 'cause that's the first time we never actually did any type of assessment.
And it's just September?
That is just for third graders.
It's September? We had, is that fifty percent, or?
No, that was the bulk of our third graders. I will say that was the majority of our third graders in this division fit in that category. When we, honestly, when we, we look at the cut score, what they're saying, our kids fit, in four hundred, if they pass in score, but they're saying that kids that get to four seventy, four forty-seven or four forty-eight is considered at risk. But to, to us, we felt that was kinda high, and also the other, um, assistant percentage for competitive in the state, they kinda felt like that was a little bit of a high cut as well to put in that category, um, to be considered at risk. But then we also have a lot of kids that are right there at that four forty-six, which is seven, four forty-eight, that, again, looking at the funding, if we put these things in place and they work well, then hopefully we can shift funding somewhere else come next year if we need to, because hopefully those numbers should definitely be pretty high.
And you know, I understand, right, that you know, the biggest barrier to getting a robust after-school tutoring ongoing is it comes right into health hours.
It does. That's what I was thinking for them. I would have to go back on to Ms. Roche earlier today, and it was a credit, both the time to do after-school tutoring, and there's five of us, and we're making a struggle. I will say for Arcadia Middle High, they have the largest mile radius to cover. So you could be thinking, kids' access are all the way down by the Mary's, and it's such a large radius, so they're trying to get five classes if they can to cover that whole mile radius, um, right now, we're not. So.
Do you have a question?
I, I, I do wanna say, I wanna comment on these, um, I went to the Virginia Super Genesis meeting last week, and I came new to this information, and I came back and all of them were really stumped on how are we going to do this, how do they get all these students ready? So I came back and I challenged them, and I was put out of their working session so many times, because I got interrupted, because I was coming in with, um, different ideas and different questions, and everything, even at five in the morning, we were going back and it was about what we could do for our dependents, what we could do for that, so they have work, but it are, um, making sure that, um, this plan.
Yes, we do thank you.
One other instructional update that I wanted to present tonight, um, hopefully get more approval for, and that is, um, I told you all this time, I was going to course offering that, I would be coming back for approval for more to the enrollment classes. So this is recently come across, um, our desk, and we are very excited that we would like to offer dual enrollment courses for criminal justice. Our career coaches actually did so, and that's all our high school students, we had three hundred and twenty-eight students already respond. The data shows that fifty-seven percent of that three hundred and twenty-eight said yes, they want it. Fourteen percent said no, no interest. Thirty percent said they just weren't sure, just wanted more information. So we are very happy to see that kind of data, um, and if our students complete the eight courses that I gave you all tonight, in addition to, um, a couple other, like, English and math courses, then they can actually graduate high school with a certificate of criminal justice.
That was mentioned in your slide that you updated that.
And how that can be done is because, as you all know, like I said before, in the Eastern College, most of their college classes now are A-lead sessions, so they can do two classes in one block in one semester. Um, so if I could get your approval tonight, we actually have two classes we wanna offer starting in the spring.
We'll get off for all of these?
If you all agree, but if so, then our students take it, and they're senior, and you're like, oh, there are inmates, so they're, like, two of us.
There's a lot. I'm really sad we accept the recommendation of a person. Criminal justice, we need a moment.
Second. Move the second. I'd be in force with all of you.
Thanks, all.
Most of you, thank you. And so, six four three, coming to us here.
Good evening. Um, looking at, uh, title programs first, a lot of work is going against, and I'm very proud to say that when our September reports come out, which will be after this meeting, they'll be printed towards the end of this week, we will meet our criteria, Title A, Federal Library, the Consortium, Title Two, Title Three, and the IDEA Part B, part flow through. Titles four and five will also meet the threshold, we're just awaiting amendments on both of those titles. So on the whole first page, we are expected to meet our spend-out limits on all of the grants. On the second page, we're awaiting amendments on our allocation to DCE that expires, and we are expected to spend zero. And we already met it on the bus driver incentive. The one that I did wanna point out is the FSR RARS that has a balance of seven eight oh seven. That is a grant that pays for college classes, and our mega said that it was good until September of twenty-four, but Ms. White locked up a call in September and said the deadline was August, so we had to do what we had spent through August. This is not something that is necessarily easy to spend, it's for college classes for teachers. So I think this chancellor sent it out to everybody, and whoever responds, responds. And, and so she did try, it's, it's done through Grand Canyon University, and so we did have a number, it started at thirty thousand, so we did have a number respond. I'm kinda concerned about the one that is, uh, the recruitment intention above it, that's also known as T.O.A., because all we can do is have HR send the information out, and if, you know, there's criteria, it's not just anybody, like, maybe could use it for reading specialists or whatever, but all we can do is send out the information, and if no one responds, then it's hard, hard to spend that money.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that's September four, National Bullying Prevention Month.
Good evening. Um, several months ago, I presented to you all about our old days, whole intervention program, and we talked about what training we've been doing in our schools. So we're gonna do an update today, as well as some of the things that we have going on during National Bullying Prevention Month. So the goal of our division team is really to provide training to our schools about bullying prevention, as well as foster kindness, empathy, and positive social connections. So tonight I have with us, buddies cannot be here, we have Laura Cody, Betsy Haney, Shani Harris, Kevin Hall cannot be here tonight, Dr. Dana Madison, Bella Jordan, and myself. Good evening, everyone. Um, for this week, for, um, bullying, for the money, bullying, a lot of the schools are doing some activities, um, so this is something that I guess sent to the schools to do for the, to make the spirit week about no bullying. Um, so most of the schools last week did this activity, and then the school is already doing something different this week, but the idea was to do like a spirit week around the theme of bullying, no bullying, and so this was something that we shared with the schools. And then some of our ongoing things that we have going out, going on all year, um, some of the schools are doing some writing across the curriculum, they're having the students, um, to find out with the, in, in maybe in the math class, or in the science class, and they continue on with that. Um, some kindness boxes, uh, we're working on some poster contests, uh, one school had a parent panel with a discussion about bullying at their open house, and then we have another student that's planning a chocolate tree event, um, trying to kick off the anti-bullying prevention program. Um, they're going to have, uh, chocolate tree there at the school, and I think there is a haunted school class again, and I, I just think that's gonna be like, we're really excited to be in front of this, um, as we're, we're moving anti-bullying.
Okay, so, um, September ninth, we had a parent university, and we felt like one of the important topics, we wanted everyone to have opportunity, um, to better promote bullying prevention. So Julie and Alicia Payne were the ones that, um, presented on that topic, and had great participation, parents were very interested in coming to that. And what that was, was just education events, so what is bullying, what is it not, what to do as a parent, um, if your child reports bullying, and how this is kind of a community issue, and how do we come together to, um, get, you know, to make this a, um, resolve this issue.
And as, as Ms. Yu has already, um, spoken about, in October, we had Sweethearts and Heroes, and, um, these guys were phenomenal. I actually went to three of the schools that they presented in, and it was amazing to watch, uh, the students' reaction, um, all the way from our, our youngest students to our middle schoolers, and the connections that they made through their presentation. Um, I actually attended one of the, well, a couple of the circle, um, events they did with the students in the classroom, and they were so very powerful, the way the students, um, interacted with them, and then actually opened up about things in the, in the, in the schools, and in the classrooms, in their home lives. And it was just a really great way for the kids to listen to others that might be going through the same things they are, and what was said in the room stayed in the room, so they built that kind of community amongst themselves, and it was just really neat to see the power that these two guys had with the students. And if you see from the next slide, these are, um, also some of them in the middle schools, um, and in the elementary schools, um, when they were presenting. And they also, we also had a parent night, so, um, on October fifth, six P.M., they did a parent night at the Anua High School, and discussed, um, educating parents on their program, um, ways to foster a sense of community and emotional resilience, um, in the household and its souls.
You're very confident, we took it a step further beyond the base, and we have a program called Box Town Bullying, and it's coming November twenty-seven, and they have a program that understands the significance of telling, telling facilities, specifically to elementary students. So for K-12, they have kids that are exploring the difference between telling versus telling, showing empathy, how being friendly is different from being a friend, uh, the difference between kid-sized problems and adult-sized problems. The third and fifth graders, they, they gonna emphasize the distinction between bullying and conflict, effective conflict resolution, fostering critical thinking and empathy, and they encourage students to be, to continue to be respectful and inclusive, and this is, they have proof of results, it's research that is engaging and reacting, and meets all the bullying prevention mandates.
Just recently, Julie and I were able to meet with Ms. Kathy Cousins and her team, um, to discuss a bullying, um, class, or, uh, coming to our schools to help with bullying, um, little, um, like, pull-up session with the students, this was a good, um, support we've been for her to give, um, at her, their program, in the line of our bullying with Ovada's program, and she's gonna give us that community partnership with her, with their program and the community, and how they foster and discuss bullying, and it's for grade three through five, and it's also a re-teacher, grade six to eight, so again, we'll be doing that soon, and partnering with her in her, um, group as well.
And then we also sent out parent education, we did pamphlets, and we have them translated, I think you all might have a copy with you, and, um, these pamphlets were sent out to all elementary and middle school, um, students, and for their families, and it really discusses what bullying is, the effects of bullying, talking to your children about the topic, topic, and the do's and don'ts if you think your child is bullied. So, um, it's a really informative pamphlet, and it talks about the trains also that we've done in school, and, um, as I said, it had been translated also in, um, Hishikriol and Spanish for those speaking pamphlets.
So everyone has their own definition of bullying, but Ovada's definition of bullying is bullying that confronts someone repeatedly and on purpose says or does seem harmful things to another person who has a heart on defending himself or herself. So the key word to that is repeated, so if it's not repeated, it's not considered bullying.
And, um, we're going to do a little simulation of part, just a very small part of the training we did with all of our school teams, and it's the bullying circle, and, um, we're gonna show you how the ripple effect is with this. It's not just really about the bully and the person, uh, being bullied, and you're gonna see the ripple effect of the different, uh, students that it affects when this goes on in the schools.
Need two volunteers. Two volunteers, please, from the audience.
Thank you.
I'm just not volunteering.
You want me to tell you? Okay, sorry. So I'm, uh, the student who's bullied. I, I'm thinking, oh man, here they come, here they come again. What are they going to say and, and do me this time? I wish I could just disappear. I hate bullying.
I want the bullying, I, I want the bullying to start to bully me, I'm particularly vulnerable. I continue to give my words to the world whenever I can. And the follower, I like to bully and I say pardon, I usually don't start it, but I may if I'm encouraged. I am the supporter. I support the bullying. I usually laugh and point and ask to others, but I may not say anything.
I am the passive supporter. I like the bullying, but I may not show outward signs of support. I am the disengaged one of her. I don't get involved in bullying and I try to be invisible. I don't help either.
I am the possible defender. I don't like the bullying and I think I should do something to help, but I don't do anything. I just watch.
I am the defender. I don't like the bullying and I try to help the bullying too.
I think Laura is so lame. I was making fun of her and I said something like, hey, you loser, no one wants you now. Why don't you get lost?
Well, Laura isn't very cool. I do agree with Ella. After things got started, I added, you know, what's your problem, loser?
Oh, I really like Ella and Becky. They are really cool and part of my family. I might not say anything when they get on the other kids, but I'm laughing and letting others know that Laura is just a ghost.
Well, I think it's funny too. I try to seem cool enough because I don't want to get in trouble. I may post a few pictures on Snapchat, but nothing serious. Yeah, Laura, she's a real freak. I mean, you just look at her.
Hey, I joined up with Melissa and her other friend. And when I do pretend not to see anything, the less attention I get from those kids, the better. Man of glad that Laura is not me, that I'm not Laura.
This makes me feel so bad. Those kids are being so mean. Laura did nothing to deserve it. I can't say anything. I don't want to be the next person to be bullied. Besides, I don't even know what I would do.
I can't stand this anymore. I have to do something. Well, what should I do? Maybe I should talk to her and say, I'm so sorry it happened. I'm going to go over there right now.
So as you can see, it's kind of a ripple effect. It doesn't just affect two people. It affects a lot of students. So this is why this education is so important to our students and this is why we, they continue to support our schools. Um, and as you'll see, um, with the ongoing data collection, right now, our elementary schools were surveyed in February of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Our middle school students were surveyed in February of twenty twenty-three. We have an upcoming survey for both elementary and middle in twenty twenty-four. And we'll use the data we collect to reveal our flows and our growths for planning for next steps for next year. And that's it. Excuse me, first I want to let you know that we do address cyberbullying. One of the tools is to address cyberbullying. We'll also, that will be on video, that concludes our whole bullying, cyberbullying presentation. We'll take questions if you'll have them after the presentation.
Well, I'm saying we want to say, like, the sweetheart people, it's a different session. And it was awesome. It was very interesting, very, I learned a lot from it as well. And so I see why I'm so excited to cover it in a place. Let's see what we can do. Sorry, Ash, Ash, maybe. Okay. And this is very important.
So the title, one of the themes that they did at their school, we'll have to fix it. They were, um, she's working with her old and tired of cyberbullying. So she went to every classroom, asked grandma Owen and told to the students about bullying. Cyberbullying, um, yesterday and then that was part of their, my school dress day for their spirit week before bullying. And over there, we'll get that one.
Thank you, Robert. What's your name? I'll, I'll say I can't thank y'all for that, but if that could catch y'all in the high school, but it is probably fair. And they need something like this. I mean, that's exactly, that would be something they need to see. I know you go to middle school. I'm just saying, big announcement, there's a lot of boys going into high schools. I have like two thousand. This is like up in middle school. Maybe they're taking something.
And they would have to, with the program, do the survey there, like they just did with middle school and move to middle school so they're the next one to go to high school.
So what kind of, um, interaction or investigation do we, we learn about bullying, if actually bullied? What are we doing to try to right that shit?
So if it is, um, parents, our students who report bullying, we have twenty-four hours to address it upon duty. Um, that's what we do before the five days. So if it is proven, then we're able to give them a consequence for the student and then provide a grant for it for the counselor, for the victim and personal lawyer. So there are things in place, um, once they investigate, there's action, you know, people round teachers, like resolve every risk. And if it is a true, um, episode of bullying or evidence, then it will be addressed.
I have six four oh five. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ash.
Um, Julie, thanks so very much. I'm just here to ask for approval for the given advisory committee members for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we do meet three times a year and, uh, you know, a lot of members say the same, you know, a few change from last year. But I'm just asking for your approval tonight.
Sure. Um, I think some of the parent representatives are actually teachers. I believe, is there, we don't have their children in town or their parents just not interested in the elderly or?
Right, those are the, uh, parents the school sent to me. He knows that they looked at their population and their stu-, and their, uh, parents and those who they select. And some parents, you know, they're not able to come to meetings or whatever, but those are the ones the, uh, principals submitted to me.
All right, I motion that we approve the, uh, by committee. Second.
It's moved to the second. All of them? Uh, I propose, most of care.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I have seven one oh one, so we can just record.
And, uh, several items to discuss, um, along with that. Um, you do have, um, the directory, um, in California, um, that's of all the schools, uh, communities, any values of each school. So you have a copy of that in California, that's yours. Um, also, is there a, um, new copy of the, of the, of the, of the, um, for bullying? Uh, I want to thank Jennifer Harris. They're awesome, um, good people, especially of need. Uh, great participation from law enforcement and from all kinds of acting and parents, everybody. It was just wonderful. And I'm looking forward to seeing, um, her team, what they're going to be taught, um, with bullying or the people. So I think that's really what I need to say. I know, yeah. I'll forget all your statements to the committee after that. Um, the other thing I had, I was contacted by the band director at Omae High School. Um, one of my calls this year was the other goal, was that every high school we had in the, like, what? Um, we have one already in place at Omae High School. However, their uniforms are in, uh, they've been repaired and repaired and repaired so many times that, um, and they allow a lot to represent us during parades at Christmas time all over the place and write to push garden and everything. So their, um, their director sent me a picture of what they needed, sent me a quote. And what they were about to do is redesign their, um, jackets to their uniforms. So, um, she gave me a price tag and, um, I sent him and I called the associate and we talked about it. And I asked him if we could match it, if we paid half of it, because we must also have money to help the other schools and they start to put their term tag together. So he did say if we come up with any suggestions, we can all.
I can hear you that, no, sorry. Oh, because you've had it ten years, since the last one was released, I think it's thirty-one years.
He said if we can, if we said, um, if you could call, it was like twenty-five, almost twenty-five thousand. But if we could come up with half of it, then we could come up with other hats. So I'm asking the board to approve us, um, coming out with half that so that we can help this school. We got very little going now, so therefore we're ready for the Christmas parade. He said we've already signed up to be there.
All right, the motion that we approve the paying of a hat for their coats and hats for the band that were playing. Second.
Would you second if you would, uh, pay half of them for the uniforms or the, you guys?
I'll, I'll tell you the discussion before we go to that. I think we should pass the board. I think it is.
We can, we can bring this ahead. Sorry, I want to invite you. All of you, please. I propose, most of care.
Okay, the other thing is I gave you, I sent you a copy of the calendar, our items in the calendar that we're building for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And, um, to look over that, we're going to read again with the, um, the big committee before we put, build three calendars. And I, um, put them together and we're going to march into everybody in the whole calendar. All our stakeholders will have, um, due to, to vote on the calendar. We'll present three options for them. They'll get to pick. And hopefully everybody gets a win, a choice to build quick, I don't know. But at least we're doing it so that everybody can have a voice. And then whatever calendar comes out, we'll have the most, I don't expect the calendar that we will present to you on, um, December fifth. So that we can get everything we got on so that our bias counts, so everybody will be prepared to start with that, the question master next year. And everything will start. Um, and the calendar was shared, these same things were shared with the parents and my parents by the way. They were shared with the teachers and the teacher advisory. I've had two, um, questions or two comments or recommendations and we have put them, so they'll be built into either one of, uh, one of the three calendars. So that we can do everything. So other than that, the only other thing is don't forget to sign up for your one-on-one meeting.
One-on-one.
Your one-on-one.
All right, do I have a motion to go into color session?
The board will adjourn to both meetings as allowed by section two point two, dash three seven one one, code of Virginia.